Aloha and welcome. I am Asia Iyer and I'm here with Maui Pono Network, conducting another candidate interview for this election cycle 2024. We welcome you and we appreciate the time that you take to learn more about the candidates so you can make informed voting decisions. We want to remind you that the primary ballots for this year's election will be reaching your mailbox around the second week of July, third week, sorry, third week of July, and those ballots are going to be due around the 4th of August. Again, that will be coming to your mailbox, so please watch for those ballots. And then the general election, of course, is in November, and again, those ballots should arrive to your mailbox about two weeks before. If you have concerns about that, please contact Maui County Clerk. Make sure you're registered to vote, and thank you again for being informed. We invite you to talk with your neighbors, your friends, your family, talk to them about candidates, talk to them about the issues. Let's keep these grassroots efforts going. I welcome you tonight. We are so excited to have Nara Boone here. She is running for the Makawau Haiku Paia Maui County Council seat. It's one that's close to my heart. I've actually run for that seat before, so I know exactly what's going on and who she's meant to be out talking to. But we want to remind you, the whole island votes for every county council seat. So even though the council members are supposed to be representing one area, they're actually voted on by the entire county, including Lenai and Molokai. So you're going to be voting for all of them, so it's good to get to know all of them. And the other thing I'd like to remind you before we get started is you can see the other candidate interviews that our volunteers have spent countless hours putting together on maupononetwork.org. And I want to thank our volunteers this evening conducting this interview. We have Paul Dislorier, Lucie Anne Denne, Anne Pick Cately, and Bruce Douglas, and again, myself, Asia Iyer. Nara, thanks for being here tonight. I'm going to start off the questions, and then Paul's going to take over moderating. I just would love for you to introduce yourself. I know you've run before. A lot of people are familiar with you. You're a familiar face in Maui and across the state. You're a well-known performer, and you're really on the community. So people might recognize your face, but tell us a little more about you and why you have chosen to really go through this enormous effort to run for this office again.
Yeah, so again, my name is Nara Boone, and I'm running for the Makawau Haiku Paia seat. I am a longtime Haiku, Pa'ua'ua specifically, resident. I grew up here in Haiku. And I'm running because I feel that community voices now more than ever need to be at decision-making tables with everything that's gone on in our county. And on our island specifically, in the past year, we need to have the voices of the people at the tables. So that's why I'm running. I am a familiar face, but sometimes people get me confused with my sisters. I have five sisters and three brothers, and so I often get that, "Are you this one or that one?" But I'm Nara. I'm a singer, a voice teacher. I teach in the schools, and I am co-founder of the Maui Housing Hui, which advocates and educates renters on their rights, advocates for. So that is very close to my heart, especially now. We started up actually in December, towards the end of 2022, and the work that we have done has just... We've done a lot, and there's so much more to do. So that's why I'm here. Thanks for having me.
Okay, so Asia, am I good to go next?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Paul. Thank you.
So Asia, you mentioned housing, and I know that you've been an advocate for housing for quite some time now. And you certainly have had experience in terms of dealing with the housing market over the years yourself. Could you give a little bit more of your own personal experience and what you see in terms of policies and things that will help us, especially after getting bombarded with FEMA money coming in and how that affected our housing market? What do you propose to deal with this crisis?
So to go back, my own journey has been kind of fraught with housing insecurity. I was reflecting the other day that the last three places that I've lived, I have had about three to four days before I had to be out of my previous place. So every single time in the last 15 years has been that, you know, heart palpitation situation of, "Am I going to find a place, or am I going to be out on the street, or living in the car with the kids and the cats and the, you know, whatever else?" So yeah, that's why I got involved with this, because I feel like, you know, people would say, "Oh, my God, I can't believe you can't find something, somebody that's lived here this long and as connected as you are, you can't find a place to live that you can afford?" And I'm like, "Yeah, that's how bad the problem is." So that is how my advocacy started, because I know I'm not the only one. So many of us are so close to being out on the streets, you know, and this fire shows that. Now, as far as what's happening with FEMA and the money that's come up, you know, the Maui Housing Hui conducted a survey on FEMA's direct lease program. And the results were pretty staggering of both landlords and renters sharing their experiences. Some have been really horrible, and there are those that... The one that just stuck out to me is somebody that said, "Oh, we got involved with the direct lease program, December 15th, as homeowners. Still no tenants, but it's the best 54K, the easiest 54K we've ever made." That's pretty impactful to me, the way that rents have just exploded, doubled and tripled for so many of us when things were already high because of COVID and, you know, the buying up of properties that happened during that time. There's going to have to be some changes. Our survey report went out. It was presented at the National Low Income Housing Coalition's Disaster Housing Recovery Conference that they had in Washington DC and is being forwarded to the House Committee that oversees FEMA. So I hope that there will be some kind of shaping up of what is happening with that. I know that the hotel part of the direct lease program is new to FEMA, and so much money has been wasted, maybe, is one way to put it. So much money has gone out because of that situation. As far as what's happening with the rents and what could maybe happen in February with all of a sudden, you know, FEMA's gone and people aren't paying $11,000 for, you know, a couple rooms, that kind of thing, it remains to be seen what's happening with that. I've heard that they may subsidize half, FEMA may subsidize half of that rental price. We'll see. I would like to see some kind of mandate where prices go back to what they were, August 8, 2023. But with the governor's latest emergency proclamation that was released today, now that does give renters a little bit more protections. I texted him yesterday and asked if he was going to close the loophole. Governor Green was going to close the loophole on lease terminations, and he said, "No, that's there for landlords to change out tenants if they need to," but that he was going to extend. So at least we got that.
So just to clarify also, you mentioned that there was one house that's being funded $54,000 for rental of that property. Is that for the year? I take it, but...
No, well, it's not for the year. It was for December 15th to six weeks ago, something like that, whenever our survey closed. So that was how much they'd made in a few months' time. Not a year, a few months' time, they made that much.
Wow. So again, that then shows that right now with our present situation that we have with the way the majority of the county council is our legislative branch, again, that sheds light certainly to a certain extent in terms of some of the rental issues and needs that we have right now. So...
Yeah.
Okay, Lucie Anne, you're next.
You're muted.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Nara, for informing us on crazy things going on and for keeping on top of rental issues, because, you know, the majority of working people on Maui are renters. You know, there are some working people whose families are established here for generations who have a family house or who are fortunate enough to buy a house. But, you know, we're really looking at renters' crisis here on Maui. So thank you for assigning yourself that task and sympathy for the situation that you've had to face. I'd like to ask you about a little bit different topic, although it's, you know, all topics are related here. And that is that we have a situation where our wages too are really... Make it tough for people to afford rentals, make it tough for people to afford to keep living here with their families. And the county council has some say over how we set wages, at least for people who get contracts with the county, that kind of thing. Have you given any thought to what people call a living wage a type of agenda that could be supported by legislation at all?
I have given some thought to it, and, you know, I think, I want to say that the living wage a single adult with one child was like $29 an hour or something like that, but now I think it's over $32 an hour.
It's 32, yeah.
32? A single parent with a child should be making 32 an hour. You know, I'm not 100% sure what the county could do. As far as though having employees or people that work under the county, I would like to see them pay a livable wage, and I'd also like to see them incorporate childcare into any of the jobs that they hire for. You know, there are some dads out there that need childcare too, not just moms, not just women. And, you know, that equity involved in both of that, in all of that for... Just for our economy in general to be taken care of. I really love the idea of universal basic income. And I don't know if that could be something that works here, but I think it's definitely worth looking into, because we live in a place that our people are leaving in droves, and many are not earning a livable wage. And if we, I keep saying this, I keep testifying and saying this, I keep saying it over and over. Our community is our economy. If our community is not here, everything else comes to a screeching halt. Forget the tourists, forget the rest of it. So we need to take care of our people first, whether that's universal basic income or paying a livable wage. I don't know how smaller businesses would work with that unless the state or our county could subsidize people's incomes. But there needs to definitely be something new happening. There needs to be a shift.
Have you been approached as a candidate with any concerns from the visitor industry employees? Because we do see strikes and things like that from time to time that are pretty visible. And I just wondered if any of that has come to your attention as well?
I've been working actually with the ILWU, the union, with different rallies and marches for affordable housing and along with Unite Here Local 5, the other union. And, you know, the cry from them is to ban short-term rentals. And I know that that is a scary concept for a lot of people. But it is what needs to happen to create housing for our people. And again, the people that work in the hotels also need a place to live. I've been with the Housing Hui, I get the calls, well, the Housing Hui gets the calls and the emails and the messages of people that are desperate, that have four jobs. This one woman I've been working with has four, works in four hotels, but her lease ended, and she was couch surfing and ended up in an underground bunker up country. And she's like, "Nara, I had to take a couple days off, because if I go back to work at the hotels and one more tourist complains to me about their chicken touching their rice, I'm going to freak out and say, 'Don't you understand that half the people serving you are homeless right now?'" You know, like, that's the reality for a lot of people.
Thank you. Thank you for that thoughtful response. Let's move on. I think Bruce, you're next.
Yeah, on the housing piece, since you, there is a foot right now, a movement afoot to do rent controls in Maui, which can also have unintended consequences. You know, sometimes we have a great idea, but sometimes the consequences are different. Can you give me your perspective on the concept of rent controls and how you see it?
Yeah, well, I think we need something, something to put the brakes on, something to pick our community up come February and now. I know a lot of the pushback with rental caps is that people will just leave their places vacant if they have to comply. And that is where the county comes in and already has these higher taxes for vacant dwellings. The, oh, excuse me, yeah, higher taxes. So those need to be increased, I believe, to the nth degree. And then that way, we can, those can be rented out to long-term renters. The short-term rental control, the county control on the short-term rental business is going to bring some housing in, it's going to bring property values down to some degree as well. And if people, you know, opt to leave those places vacant, then the county should step in and charge them for those vacancies. That is my main thing. I know in other places, it's said that rent control didn't work specifically because landlords would rather have their place empty than comply, and here, that's not going to work.
You know, one of the cornerstones isn't just having people renting, but having people own their own home, even starter homes. There was a big push after World War II to start up the whole neighborhoods, the small starter homes where people could have their first house and get into that market rather than be a forever tenant. Do you have any ideas of how such a goal like that could be achieved legislatively?
Well, I think we've got to get control of the prices and everything else first. And then what, and we need to also adjust the area median income to be more reflective of long-term tenants here and not just the people that have flocked here in the past few years that have set our AMI much higher, not fully reflective. Once we do that, then that will bring prices into a more affordable slash workforce kind of area for people. I don't know about people wanting to all live, whether it is apartments or cookie cutter-type neighborhood developments. Not everyone is attracted to that model here in the islands. So I love the lotteries for first-time homebuyers. I love the idea of the $30,000 kind of grants for startups. And if we can get incorporate more things like that, then that would be beneficial to the community.
Okay, thank you for your thoughtful answers, and with that, I will pass it to Anne.
Aloha, Nara. Thank you for running. I wanted to ask, what do you find that the critical issues in the area that you're representing? And I know you represent the whole county, but I've heard recently about this. Really big homeless encampment on Holomua Road, where there's been meetings at the Paia Community Center about it, what to do about it. There's criminal, there's criminal action there, and it's a lot of pollution and brush fires, which I don't know if they're attributing to the people in the camp, encampment. So that just, I don't know. What would you do about that? What is, did they, or what are they doing about it? Do you approve?
What is being done about it is a gate that is going to be placed at the bottom of Holomua Road, right by Hano Highway, and it will end right before the old Maui High School. So that's the plan, and I don't think that that is the best way to go about things. Number one, that's the evacuation zone for, that's the evacuation route for Kualu, for Mama's Fish House, for that area, for tsunamis and things. What are they going to do if those gates are closed come 7 o'clock at night? I don't think that punishing people for not having a home is right at all. And if these fires, these fires have taught us anything, it's that anyone can be in that situation at the drop of a hat, at the drop of a dime. So why are we punishing these people? The landowners need to be responsible for their fallow land. If they cut that down, there's far less chance of a fire spreading to Pa'ua'ua or to Kualu. Blaming these people for all of the fires that have happened, I think, is unfair. And I don't know, I've heard different stories about how many of the fires are for those specific houseless that are there. What we need to do is we need to get all of those people someplace stable to live, whether it is a Pu'u Hona'ua in that area, like a tent city type thing. There was talk of a former mayor had wanted to make the old Maui High itself a place for the houseless to go and to have wraparound services. So perhaps that is something that should be looked at instead. And the houseless thing, it is a big deal for this side of the island right now, absolutely. But I think that the onus is being put on the wrong people to keep the area safe. That's what I think.
Do you think some of these houseless people would want to share their, express their voice and help in any solutions?
Well, they are. They're testifying.
Thank you for that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah. Well, thank you. Thank you for that, Nara, and I get the next question. So I want to talk about our diversified and circular economy. Certainly, we've been focused on tourism for quite some time, but as a legislator, what would you do and what you propose to really address some of this more expansive way of really helping our community?
Okay, and you mentioned diversifying. That was the thing, right?
And circular, yeah.
And circular economy. Well, let's talk about circular economy. Let's talk about circular water too, and I think they go hand in hand. I think that we need to have more water reclamation facilities happening that can then, you know, we can build, diversify our tourism industry with ag parks and different ecotourism adventures that they can go on, where the tropical gardens are wired with reclaimed water, and the tourists go there. And maybe there's some farm plots, you know, and some farm-to-table picnic tables and different things. There's a lot that can happen that hasn't been happening. There's a lot of waste that's been happening, and our islands are so abundant, and we cannot take that for granted and waste what we have. So as far as circular economy, it's the same thing, diversify. Let's grow some more food. Let's keep the money in the pockets of our farmers here. Let's get them some good water. Let's lower their rates. Let's charge the hotels more for the water that they have. You know, there's a lot of different things that we can do to diversify and keep the money here, which should have been done, by the way, with this whole FEMA thing. I mean, I know that this is a big thing in my life, and that's why it, you know, is always popping into my head. But the idea that three property management businesses were hired to oversee placing all of these people into homes and none of those property management companies are here is really unfortunate, because a lot of money is going to that, that could be going into our economy.
Yes, there is something to say about disaster capitalism and how people have profited from that, who've been part of this whole issue here in Lahaina, for sure. So, but with that, then let me just bring it over to Lucie Anne. Nara mentioned water, so...
You're reading my mind, Paul. Yeah, I'd like to build on your comments about water, Nara. Now, not a lot of people have read an obscure report that was just released last year, but the county commissioned Brown and Caldwell, an engineering firm, to look at their county water system. And the conclusion was that it appears that the largest part of the water system, the part that serves all of central Maui, Kahului, Wa'lu'ku, Wahe'a, Waikapu, Paia, you know, south Maui, all the way out to Makena, that part of their water system, the central Maui system, somehow has 4 million gallons a day that's unaccounted for. So in other words, this water is either pumped from a well or it is treated at a water treatment plant. They do treat some stream water for this system, a small amount. And then by the time it gets to the billing customer, that water somehow doesn't show up. So they're pumping more than they're billing for. And yet, the major new developments that are proposed for south Maui, where the county's major pipeline goes, and 12 million gallons a day of water from central Maui goes to south Maui, are saying, you know, if the Eau Aquifer doesn't have enough water for us, the county has a really good plan to go to Haiku and drill wells and just augment their system. So you would be representing the folks in Haiku, Paia, Makawau. Have you ever heard of this plan to go to Haiku and drill, I don't know, eight to 10 to some older plans, say 16 wells, and connect a pipeline to the central Maui system that goes to south Maui and central Maui? Have you ever heard of this plan? And if so, do you...
I've heard a little bit.
Yeah, do you have any thoughts about, as the representative from this region, what you might like to say about it?
I don't think that Haiku has a ton of water to just keep distributing elsewhere. And I know that you said did wells, but as someone that grew up here and kind of looks over the guardrail at every turn that might have a stream, I am not seeing the water flow like it used to flow, and I worry about the shortage of water on the island in general. I do feel that the hotels should be using way more reclaimed water. I know that the Grand Wailea uses a ton of water. I'm not sure how much of that is reclaimed.
Zero.
And that's ridiculous.
It's all potable water. They do have a well, they do have a well that, it's a salt well to recharge the artificial lagoons there, that, so the lagoons are filled with that. But everything else is potable water, all the landscaping and everything.
And being taken from elsewhere. So I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that at all. And Lucie Anne, actually, I'm curious for your opinion, because in all of the meetings I've been sitting in on, one of the things is this, one of the topics that is coming up is that FEMA has these mitigation grants. And I don't know how realistic this is, but I think it would be incredible if FEMA... So the mitigation grants are for things like planting native plants, so that they're fire resistant and that kind of thing. I would like to see them use the mitigation grants to lay the infrastructure for more water for the community. And then these people that have been waiting on the water meters for decades could have a closer source to tap into that would cut down on their water, cut down on the price of them getting their water and speed up that idea, which then, of course, creates more housing. Do you think that that is something that isn't all realistic or feasible?
Well, the fire happened up country, and the problem is up country. If you want a water meter in Tihei, you just apply for one. If you want a water meter in central Maui, you just apply for one. If you want a water meter up country, they tell you the list is closed. And if you're lucky enough to have your number drawn, then you might have to put up $50,000 or more to make that connecting pipe. So could FEMA extend some of those pipelines? A systemic plan would need to be drawn up and funding estimate gotten. You know, it's an engineering sort of situation. And the best thing would be pipes that could serve the most number of people who have been waiting for water meters.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound illogical to me, and it's something that I think if some... if, if someone can bring it up and, and keep focusing on it, stuff does happen. So I, I applaud you for coming up with, you know, that innovative look at things. And maybe you've talked to some of your friends and neighbors who've told you their horror stories about when they finally get their number called on the up country water meter list, they find out that it is beyond their reach to create the pipe connection between where the county water is and where they need the meter. And so they have to give up their, their meter. You know, it's like give up their idea of the meter because that, that money is just not there for their family. There's no short term or there's no low interest loan they program they could get into. Nothing has been set up. It's kind of just, you know, tough cookies here.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's the way it is sometimes for some of our residents, tough cookies. But again, hopefully with the right elections, we can get the right people in so that can be ended for our community. Bruce, you're next.
Yes, Nara, the sign of a real legislator isn't just sitting back and going to meetings and passing laws as your incumbent is doing, but really getting out there and championing bills and putting them forward and seeing them from beginning to end. During your first year in office, if you get in, what would be your three favorite, most important pieces of legislation you would want to champion?
Only three? Well, there are, there are a lot of things. But I, sorry, my brain is working here. I will say that I did go to the Capitol and knock on all the office doors about the short term rental issue, the, the getting rid of the, amortizing the Minnetoka list. And that would be something I don't think is gonna be solved right away. So that's something I would focus on. The last time I ran, that was one of my things, is that I wanted to get short term rentals out of like school zone areas. Not, you shouldn't have a short term rental within a mile of a school zone, in my opinion, because those homes should be for our residents. So those are some of the things, advocating for housing for, for our community is a big one. But I also think that this water thing is a big one. And this is something, obviously, coming up with ideas like this are kind of out of the box, outside the box. Things that I will stand up for and make happen. And the other thing is that I want to see more Pu'ho'ua's. I want to see more places for our houseless to be able to go and be safe, especially with this new law in the country that can make it illegal that he's sleeping outside. I don't know where our world is coming to, but you know, I grew up at a time where Hohokipa had a campground towards the windsurf end. And I remember camping there. Baldwin Beach on the field had a campground between the soccer field and Paia Bay. There were, you know, places we could go. Olowalu was, was affordable. It was like seven to twelve dollars a night, something like that to camp. So people would work in Lahaina. They would spend three days camping in Olowalu. They'd have to sleep somewhere else for a night and then they could be back in Olowalu. Those prices now are just out of control. It's nothing like that. I would advocate, again, so many of us, if you look at our community, are half a step away from not having a roof over their head. Fifty-two percent, fifty-three percent of Maui County renters are cost burdened as it is, spending thirty percent of their, their income on their rent. And a quarter of those people are severely cost burdened and spending fifty percent or more of their income on rent. So it's real and we need to not punish people that the cost of living is as high as it is here and help them out instead.
Thank you. And with that, I'll pass it to Anne.
Yes, Nara, you know, I've been here thirty-five years and I, I came over here to windsurf and I, they had camping at Kanaha.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened.
Yep.
I don't know why we shut down all these campgrounds.
Right.
Maybe things got really, but one thing that concerns me, they interview a lot of people. What publication did I read? I can't remember. Civil Beat or Hawaii News Now, maybe, or maybe I saw it. But they interviewed a lot of the, the homeless people or houseless, I think is the correct way to say it, that live there. And I was surprised, these people came from outside of Hawaii totally, like from the mainland. I'm thinking, it seems to me like, you know, just like we have housing for residents, right? And affordable housing for residents is a priority. What, can we make that so it serves the Maui houses? Or is it wrong to turn discriminatory to turn people away that, from our services that our taxes pay for to, you know what I mean?
Well, I think that you run into the issue that we run into with people buying up properties here.
Oh, yeah.
And that, and that is the, the understanding for some that we, we basically, we live, we're living in an occupied nation, right? But it's considered a part of the United States. And because of that, American citizens aren't able to go from one state to another state. So I don't believe that banning people from flying here would work if they're homeless. And I know that that does happen where other states fly there, they're homeless here. I don't think that it's constitutional to do it that way. But there are different ways of doing things similar to, you know, the waitlist for affordable housing that they've come up with. It, Johnson came up with a couple of years ago and I'm waiting to see it enacted, where people that have lived on the island longest get higher on the list for affordable housing and that kind of thing. So maybe that's something that could be done for the, you know, the houseless as well. I just, I have compassion for everyone. So I, it's hard for me to think that some people deserve help and others don't. Not that I don't want to roll my eyes when somebody says they moved here five months ago and they're looking for a place and whatever, you know? Not that I don't roll my eyes at that, but I do feel like everyone deserves some kind of assistance.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Nara, for that. And this will be our, our last question. And we'll leave that up to you, Nara, by seeing if there's anything that, we've covered a lot of topics. Is there any other thing that we haven't covered that you feel passionate about, that you'd like the public to know about you and you're running for this office?
Well, there are lots of things that I'm passionate about. The other work that I've been doing since the fire actually is therapeutic art and music programs. I'm part of a nonprofit called Wisdom Circles Oceania. And I'm the Maui facilitator. So we go to the hubs and the different hotel shelters and we bring art supplies and we do art and we bring a bunch of instruments for people to bang on or strum and I'll sing. And, and it's its own therapy for people. Our community is hurting, soul deep hurt at this point. And it's not just Lahaina and it's not just up country. It, it is spread countywide and then some. So for me, trauma is a big one. Therapy is a big one. We need to get people help, especially now. And, you know, midwifery and, and women's health is another issue that's really big for me. And the suppliers, suppliers, that's a strange way to put it. Doctors of prenatal care, Mau'elani shut down. And then that shut down one of the three facilities for pregnant women. And that is something that is unfair and needs to switch. So whether it's legalizing, going back to legalizing lay midwifery, indigenous midwives, that is something that I, I'm fully, fully believe in and something, a world I grew up in, I need to advocate for as well.
Yes, and for those who don't know, your, your mother was very much involved with midwifery for quite some time.
Yeah, forty years. She was one of the main midwives on the island for, for forty years, yeah.
So, so with that, really compassionate response in terms of what we need right now, in terms of dealing with the trauma that's happened for so many people. And I, I witnessed that also going to Lahaina a lot and to the hubs. So again, that's a very important need. And again, to see that you're actively addressing it, you're rolling up your sleeves and getting in there and really helping our community in that way. And that says an awful lot in terms of running for office. So.
Well, I would like to point this out, actually. Because this was the deciding factor for me running for office was I spoke with council member Tamara Palton. And we were at Napili NoHo. And I told her I was, wasn't sure if I was gonna run because it felt like everything else I was doing was far more important. And, you know, she said, well, the reality is no one should be campaigning how we regularly campaign. No one, everyone should be too busy helping to stand on the side of the road and wave. And, you know, for me, I feel like now more than ever, we need to get everyone involved. And what needs to happen, instead of joining the sign waving, is talking to five of your friends and making sure they're registered to vote and making sure that they are voting and making sure they talk to five of their friends. Because the only way that we are going to get change, especially with the money that someone like me is up against, is community. And it's spreading the word and it is activating our friends and our neighbors to get going to. That's the only way we're gonna have change.
Thank you for that, Nara. And that's a, you know, and that's very true, especially right now. The incumbent that you're running against, UHodges, has the carpenters' union behind her that'll have hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for her campaign. So again, what we need is instead of big money interest, really directing things, that we need this grassroots. And as you mentioned, talking to each other, getting to know your neighbors and really encouraging them to go out and vote. And for the county council, you can vote for all nine of the county council members. So again, whether you're in Lahaina or Molokai, you can vote for Nara if you choose. But again, the most important thing is to become an informed voter. So thank you for listening to Plugging In. We'll be having all of our interviews at the Maui Pono Network. That's MauiPonoNetwork.org. And you can go and listen to all the different interviews that we'll be having with the candidates so that you can become an informed voter for our 2024 elections. Mahalo for watching. Thank you, Nara.
Thank you for having me. And remember, when you do vote, please check the boombox.